And in fact, I mean, you've even gone one more and looked at option D here, which, of course, I've got my little heart around option D, but fall back to option C if we need to, because I really think that if we go back to our partners, because I think they were feeling frustration over the growing costs, and we take that in mind. And I sort of build on what Eric and Bridget were saying. The law enforcement that we're going to put in our schools isn't going to be the same kind of traffic beat cop detective that's trying to find, you know, who murdered Mr. Brown. Well, no, we, Mr., not him. Nobody, I didn't do it. It wasn't me. Jones, Mr. Jones. But, you know, so we don't have the same kind of needs that they do, but on the other hand, we have different kinds of needs in our school. Like, we were looking at the restorative justice, that, you know, maybe we can build on that end of it more, that they can build those partnerships with the kids, that trust. So I see this as, you know, because number one is the safety. We need to make sure that they know how to handle a weapon if need be, they know how to spot trouble, and are not afraid to go in there. And I also think, though, that, you know, on-the-street law enforcement doesn't have time to be working with kids one-on-one and understanding them and see problems, and maybe, because that's what I would like. I really don't want us to have to go in there and address an active shooter. I would much rather see us, you know, do the things that we're doing by hardening the schools, by having people that are working with our kids and intervening, so that we do everything we can to prevent such an instance. And I'm thinking this puts us there. And, yeah, I ask for a lot of everything that's in here, but I think I came back with more. I mean, I feel listened to, and I'm glad, I'm glad you did, and I'm glad we're going forward with this. And I think our partners are going to be happy with this, too. I hope they will, because, you know, I think maybe if we all sat down, this maybe we should have done, and understood where each other was coming from, we probably would have come to this, too. At least, I hope so. I mean, I think this is a good plan. And I saw Mr. Andreas working with some community people last night at a Moms Demand Action, and there were a lot of people that were concerned about who we were going to have, what kind of armed people we were going to have on our school district. And I must commend him. For two hours, we didn't stop that meeting until no more hands were raised, no more questions were asked, and they all felt comfortable and assured that he could lead this and keep our school safe. So I want to commend you for that.
Thank you.
And, because that was one thing I, what does the community say about this? So when I heard about that, and I didn't share that meeting with the rest of you, because if I told you and you went, then I couldn't go. So, well, not at this, I didn't want to go into it, you know? I want to make sure that I didn't violate any sunshine laws.
Why did you do it yourself?
But I sat, but it was, I wanted to see what the people, what the community had to say, and these were parents and teachers, and they seemed comfortable. He didn't have the whole plan about, because he couldn't, of course, talk about, you know, our own police force, but about securing the buildings. So I was happy with that. And I commend you for, I don't know, I can't take credit for this whole plan, no, but that you listened to me and that we've got another plan. And I really, really do hope that our partners come forward and work together to come up, you know, with something that's going to be in the best interest of our kids. Thank you.
Jane.
Well, I like this plan, and I really hope that these people would be integral and be part of our school community, and I think that's what we're assuring our parents and our community of, I hope. I know that in former days, the SROs were really, really involved in after-school activities and other things, and have become less involved with that, but the SR1s in particular would be moved in and out and would have only an ancillary impact on the school population. We have kids that need to see people in a uniform or see that these people are integrated and part of us, and that they can trust, and that they can talk to them. And we know that our SROs that work in our middle and high schools do that, and they are doing a wonderful job for us. I would see this as being even greater impact on our school population, and the social and emotional issues that might come up, that they'd be right there to help us with. My one concern is that, you know, when Governor Scott first started talking about this, he talked about in high schools and other schools, that you'd have an SRO for every 1,000 students, and we don't always have those. Now, I can remember working with a sheriff in 2014 and getting a second SRO at Riverview, because we determined that there were some issues there, that the SROs and the sheriff believed we needed two people there, and we do have two there, but we don't always have that complement. So my concern is, do we have enough? Is this number in line with what we would need to staff properly? Because I think that ratio of 1,000 students to an SRO is meaningful and impactful.
And so our staffing, if you look at the total cost of the gray column, contemplates a school resource officer, one at every elementary, one at every middle school, two at every high school. It would then break the district into three zones. Each zone would have a sergeant that had responsibility, and would also have a floating officer that allowed us for coverage, so there'd be three unassigned officers. Then there would also be three detectives, who could be deployed at the pleasure of the lieutenant or the chief of police, as different issues arose. So you have essentially nine officers who are not assigned to a site, that if you had the need for heightened awareness on a campus, if you received a threat and needed extra boots on the ground, you could do that. And then you also have the flexibility of pulling that second officer at the five high schools. So we do have a flexible force that would allow us to get, I lost count, 14, 15 additional officers on any campus in the district if necessary.
I think you've done a great job. Absolutely. All of you together have done a great job. I was not so concerned about our partners, because I knew it would be what it'll be, and it is. They've made their stand, and they have not changed, and I don't think there's any reason for us to go back again and try again, because you have tried over and over, and it is what it is. I'm very comfortable with this plan. I think that what we're hiring now and doing our own internal force, I think that's where we need to be. We need to have control over our own employees. We need to have control. A long time ago, I learned this from the bus debate, you don't want to do contracted services for bus drivers. You don't want a contract for a bus driver's service, because they're not going to pay as much attention to your kids as the people that are employed by you and see those kids on a daily basis. And the same thing had happened with our facilities, when we had a facilities department coming in here and cleaning everything. We didn't have the cleanliness what we have now. It was different. When you're employed by a district, you take ownership and pride in a district. At least, if you're decent, you do, and I happen to think our people are decent, if not above that. So I see the police force the same way. They are going to become part of our district, and they will buy into the district and buy into the kids, and buy into what it is that they're doing, and keep those kids safer, because they are responsible, and they don't report to anybody else but the school system. I like that. I like your plan for two years. I think that will give you ample time to be able to put everything in place. And I certainly like the fact that the cost will be $1.4 million, or $1.5 million, I don't know, $1.429 million, as opposed to the millions before that. And I like the fact that we will not have to cut that, do that 1% reduction, because I did not want to see that happen in our schools right now. I think we're building the school community right now and solidifying that, and to then begin to go in and take it apart right now would be detrimental.
I do want to speak very briefly. One of the points that you brought up, I want to be very, very clear on, and that is chain of command, because we've had some conversation about if they're on the campus of a school, who do they report to? Because these are sworn law enforcement officers, there would be a separate chain of command that goes from the school site, so the officer assigned to the campus would report to a sergeant who reports to the chief of police, who is a direct report of Mike's, who goes through operations to myself. They would not report to the principals, although I have charged them, that as they stand up the department, that there are formal mechanisms to get feedback from the principals on the performance of the officers. But at the end of the day, sworn law enforcement officers will be in the chain of command of other sworn law enforcement officers, not our principals.
No, I didn't mean, I didn't mean that they be...
No, no, I just wanted that to be out there publicly, because we've had lots of conversations about security monitors, and they're a completely different lot, where I've been very passionate that they remain in the chain of command of the principals and be deployed for various things. They're kind of the eyes and ears, but these sworn law enforcement officers would report up through Mike to me.
Real quick clarification. Are we keeping security monitors in our position as it's continuing on?
Yes, yes. The security monitor program is completely separate from this. We might change the name, because I think the word "security monitor" is kind of a false...
I might have that commercial where they said "monitor."
Maybe they're just aids or monitors, but they're not really providing a security function, and so we may alter the title of that position, but we've not proposed to lessen their numbers in any way.
Okay, Shirley, sorry.
I would hope that, you know, as we move forward, that we'll actually build on our relationships we have with local law enforcement. Again, checking in with other districts, there are some, and then also some of what's happening, and I'm understanding you're going to a conference in Orlando, where you're going to hear about some of these best practices, where you're going to hear about, you know, people who use the dogs on the campus, you can hear about drones on campuses. But I'd like to see that we work with our sheriffs and police to encourage them. You know, they're out there, and they have to park someplace to do their reports. Invite them. Come on our property. Park in our lot. Do your reports here. Come in and have lunch, if you want to. I would, just to open up our doors, to encourage them to come in, and so that they can see our school, so if something does happen, they know what our school looks like, they have a little better understanding. And also, maybe we can do a program like what they have in Manatee County, the Handle with Care, if there's a problem in the home the night before, that, you know, there'd been a domestic incident, or, you know, somebody was arrested, or maybe there was a shooting in the home, so that we know that something happened, and they let us know that there might be an issue with that child, to, you know, give them a little extra leeway that day, if they fall asleep in third period, they didn't sleep the night before. So maybe we can find ways to partner even more deeper with our local law enforcement.
That's next on the agenda.
I have a quick...
That's not with the least, that's with our...
So, a couple of questions, just to have a better holistic, although this is great. I'm very, very, very happy with how this is all laid out. I think it drives the conversation very productive, and I'm very, very pleased. The question I have is, again, kind of going back to where the, what the realistic timeline, have we really calculated for that, the startup costs? I mean, is that embedded in here?
I can assure you, there is something we haven't thought of.
Okay, all right.
So I'm not going to tell you that everything is there, that every person we talked to says, "What did you think about this?" So it's important that we talk to a lot of folks, because every person who lays eyes on it says, "Well, where's your evidence locker going to be?", or "How are you going to transport a kid to jail?", God forbid. And so, all of those things. There are certainly unforeseen expenditures that have not been represented here. This is a good faith estimate. We will continue to refine it the more people that we talk to, but I can assure you, there are things that we have not contemplated. That's why we've made some, kind of, some block allocations and not tried to cost it out. I believe we can stay within those allocations. We've allocated a half million dollars, $250,000 in each year for those types of things, but I personally have never stood up a police department before, and so we are going to learn from the experts around us as we go.
Which is, and that's where I was going, I think that, that's where it asks, like, do we hire a consultant to help us? Because there's not only, there's a number of compliance elements that I think we're certainly not on our radar. I just, and there's the other part of, part of me guesses, and you touched on this, and I know it's coming up in our agenda, is I have a sense that the legislature may reevaluate parts of the School Safety Act, and there may be a change in some of the funding mechanisms or breakdown, which, and I think that's kind of separate, but should be conceived as, I think putting up, evaluating whether an internal police force is the right solution, is something that maybe takes a little bit of vetting and some time to make sure. So I don't know how we can layer it with evaluating it and still working with our partners to have a better understanding of what taking, what that looks like, the capital implications. I mean, I just find that, and I could be wrong, not my area of expertise, but I feel like if we just, you can't just snap your fingers and have a police force inside there, internally. So the timeline, and in kind of managing what Tallahassee may or may not do next year, or next legislative session, what do you think that looks like? I mean, we're talking about in 2018, 19, ready to go with an internal police force? That's my only, I mean, I just feel like there's still a little due diligence to understand it better.
I don't think we can ever contemplate what the legislature's going to do.
And, of course, no, you're right.
No way can we do that. So if we base our decision, and we were told that we're moving too slow, we're moving too slow.
I knew you were going to say that.
So now, you knew...
Nope, I knew that was coming, and so I'm prepared to answer that question. I knew that was going to be said.
I have to say it.
Oh, it's fine. I do not take offense to it. I know, and I don't want to be a hypocrite, I want to be consistent. I knew that that was coming, and, but that's, because I found myself asking, saying the same thing. I get it. And it really is, I, that's what I was saying, if we were, we need to respond, or responding with various, looking at different options. If we were going to go down the route of a police force, I think that's dramatically different than anything we've done before. I think that's a fair statement. So is that something we can continue to evaluate, and with some of the other solutions that have been provided? I just worry for something that big, that would be, express caution that you would go too fast to just create your own police department.
Three years.
Three years.
It's two years.
Well...
Well, four months from today, we would open the 18, 19 school year. So, I mean, that's the date that has to be burned into your mind, is that school starts in mid-August. As we sit here in mid-April, we are four months out. And so the same concern that was expressed to be by the sheriff and every one of the city managers is a concern that I share, which is, August will be here, what route are we going? Because we have to move quickly here. You look at hiring 30 staff to do it in an organized way, to make sure we're hiring the right people, training them, and having them deployed in four months is a heavy lift. And so, you know, if I were the sheriff watching this, he has already begun the recruitment process for the SRD-2s, although we haven't entered into a contract with him. He felt like he needed to get ahead of it. He's probably asking questions of, "Am I going to be hiring people, or are you going to be hiring people?" So they're going to need some clarity from us, and they're going to need it pretty quickly in regards to, "Am I helping you stand up a department, or am I hiring SRD-2s? I need some direction from the board. How is it you want me to partner with you?" And so it is a tight timeline. August will be here before we know it.
Agreed, Shirley.
Well, I would like us to go forward with it, but I think when you're looking at our contracts, something that we can definitely partner with the sheriffs, I would think, and the police, what are you doing with an absence? You know, substitutes. I mean, we might include in that contract how we might be able to contract with them on a day-to-day basis to fill in with off-duty or whatever. So something in those contracts that we would perhaps have a sheriff come in if our SRO or our internal police aren't there. I mean, because I don't think we should have enough backup to, or how we possibly could.
Well, but we've built into...
Think about absences.
Yeah, we've built into a sub for each zone, a sergeant for each zone, and then the second officer, and so if you had no one at the elementary school, you might pull your second officer from the high school to make sure you had coverage.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, if you want, and I'm, as everybody knows by now, I'm in favor of us having our own internal police force. I really think it's better for the district.
Well, I think it's better for the district, and I think it's better for our partners, too. I think that was a direction they'd like to see us go, from indications that I've heard or seen.
I have a couple other questions, if I might. All right, so when we look at, if we were to do our own department, we would still need agreements with the four municipalities for continuation of the middle and high school program. Do you want me to request that they send us contracts that align with their proposals, or would you like for me to attempt to better articulate the financial position of the district and ask for continuation under the current terms for one year?
Yes.
That's A or B?
I was going to say, there are two options.
Oh, sorry. Yes, you write the letter and explain the financial implications and what you're planning on doing, and what you need.
I agree. I think we go back and let them know they've got an out, if we can just help us out for one year, and, you know, not only financially, but also in other ways, too, to help us to get this, make it a success.
Attempt to negotiate first, and go forward.
Negotiate what?
Basically go to item D.
With a 50/50?
Yeah.
Or one additional year.
Oh, yes. That goes without saying, you have to do that.
Right. And the only other question I have is, we have some really anxious people in the field. I asked our principals before they submitted any potential 1% reduction at their site to speak to the employees affected, so if you're the career advisor at a middle school, and your middle school is proposing to cut a career advisor under the 1%, they gave them a heads up, people can figure out, "Hey, that's me." I would like to give our principals some direction to kind of let these people off the hook. Are we going to pursue the 1% across-the-board reduction, or would you rather drop to that bottom line and do the targeted reductions?
Bottom line.
Bottom line. And again, I commend you for keeping them away from the schools and finding some cuts that we could do, you know, in central administration, because that probably was a good exercise that y'all did.
Absolutely.
I'm very, I'm very happy we're moving forward, but I have trepidation about taking on a huge behemoth in my mind of internal police force without any subject matter expert that is not a dig at you, but I don't know if you've put, I mean, maybe you are, but if some, a consulting side to help us make sure that the projections we have put forward are...
We sort of do have a consultant, and they've been dealing with him, they've been talking to him, and that's Larry Leon. He can, he can answer a lot of the questions that they have, because he's done it.
But I would tell you...
And we don't have to pay for it.
Yep, but I share your anxiety. I mean, this is not something I contemplated as a superintendent, that I would have sworn police officers somewhere in my chain of command.
That's why you get the big pay.
But there, you know, there is some peace of mind that when law enforcement issues go down, you say, "Call the sheriff or call the chief of police." Now, they belong to us, and all the liability that goes with it. So if you weren't a little bit nervous, there'd probably be something wrong with you.
I just, okay, here's a reasonable question, and I will, if I'm a hypocrite, I'll own it. Is four months a reasonable time to put something like this into, together?
It's two years.
Well, no.
It's four months is...
The initial, it's a framework, okay, I get the full implementation will be two years, but step one has to be done four months. So those with the conversations you've had, the numbers, estimates, and I get their estimates, so also it makes me a little nervous, too. So you, four months, we...
Need 23.
You're comfortable with a four-month timeline?
Have no choice.
In a word, yes. I mean, it's a challenge, but I think we will rise to that challenge.
I have a question on the cuts that we're making, and that's on the pupil support line.
Is it one of the highlighted ones?
It's one of the highlighted ones. You're upgrading...
Are we done with that conversation?
I think, Michael, did you have a, I'm sorry, Shirley, did you have a comment?
I was going to say, obviously, we would have to proceed rightly and cautiously and make sure we do everything, but we're not going to go this alone. And so, because I certainly don't want to put my name involved with this and not have it succeed, because we want high success for the school district, and so we will proceed the right way. And so, as it's been noted here, it's a heavy lift, so we will have to hire the leadership team, and then that leadership team is going to help us spin things up and get all these processes in place, and we will work with all our community partners. We'll do everything we can to get this, it's a two-year plan. Can we do the whole thing in a year? No, can't be done. It's got to be done timed appropriately, and so that's the way we'll move forward with it.
On the reductions list, I'm going to get into the, I've got my boots on, I'm going to get into the weeds here. Pupil support services, we're upgrading three administrators, getting rid of another one, putting two over to a grant, reducing a social worker from 11 to 10 months. I'm like, eh, really? Because I thought maybe those social workers of pupil support services, they do things in the summer. I'm just asking, is this necessary? And then, when we're looking at facility services, reducing five custodians and five bus drivers, I know they're empty positions right now, but the reason they're empty is because, you know, these people can work at Walmart for less. I would like to be able to come back at some point and look, because I think we're doing a salary study.
Very targeted, yes.
And, because, I mean, the reason we have those positions out there...
I do not anticipate custodial to be on the list, though. I do anticipate bus drivers, but not custodial.
Yeah, I mean, we've got positions out there, because the custodians we have right now are probably doing more than what other custodians in other districts do. I mean, they're carrying a heavy load. I just want to make sure that we're looking at that, that there's a reason those positions are empty, and I think part of that reason is we're not paying them enough. So we're putting that money back in there, but maybe even before the end of, I would like to see that we look back at those two numbers before the end of the year, and then when we're looking at taking a social worker out, you know, or moving him from 11 to 10 months, is that really, is that really what we have to do? Are these social workers working with families in the summer months? I, you know, I ask that, because pupil support services, it's not in the classroom, but it's supporting pupils, and we're moving some into a grant, so we're keeping them. But just letting you know, I, I'm in the weeds here.
I didn't hear a question, but I hear you. Yes.
I have concerns, I have concerns about pupil support services cuts, and I have concerns about the custodial and the bus driver cuts, not so much, I mean, they're unfilled positions, so the money isn't being spent now anyway, but maybe we've got those positions out there because we feel they're needed, you know, because I don't like to see, you know, other staff riding buses, because we don't have substitute bus drivers.
Or school board members.
I know you listen to me.
I hear you loud and clear.
He listens.
So you need some direction, but by way of the staffing component, that's where, that's the last one that you were asking for? So what across, 1% across the board, or are you talking about the...
No, we looked at that 1.2 that we'd agreed to, but that if, if, after further discussions or looking back at it with a sharper pencil, if you were to come back on those two items and say, "Well, we got our study, and we need to put more money here or more money there," I would look at that. Might even smile at it.
Good?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's what you've got all that paper for. What are you doing?
Sorry, these are too important, I don't need to...
Sorry, these are too important, I don't need to take them. Not that I'm sure if you ever do want to, I'm not gonna deny you that opportunity.
How are you?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I think everyone's looking forward to this conversation, so.
Good.
Mental health plan, let's dive right in.
Yes. What we did was, we prepared an insert for you, and I'm just gonna introduce this issue that we have been working on. We tried to graphically, for you, represent what we have been working on, actually, this year intensively, not just since the state offered some additional dollars. So if you will refer to that graph, we did change the name from our mental health plan to behavioral health plan. We had experts in the field who we've been interviewing. One of them said, instead of asking the question of a child, what's wrong with you? Which as educators, that really isn't our role. We want to be thinking differently, all of us as educators, from teachers to principals to our counselors and social workers. Instead of that thinking of what's wrong with you, we want to ask, what happened to you and how can we help you succeed in school? So that's more a behavioral health kind of initiative. We chunked what we are thinking about into three categories. One is the, having a coherent social-emotional learning curriculum, and we're going to address that with you, but we were very strategic. We used experts in the field, other districts, and came up with the curriculum that we have listed there. We also want to look at how do we support tier one and tier two interventions in our school? And just as a reminder, on that graphic, tier one refers to every student in every classroom. Tier two is the small group and one-on-one support that the children get in school. And then tier three is really the individual and therapy expert support that comes outside of the district, outside of our educators. These are the wonderful resources that we have in our community. So the tier one and tier two support, knowing that this funding, you know, as Caroline said, we can't predict what the legislature will do in the following year, we want to build capacity in our schools with these dollars. So how can we do that? And Sonia is going to describe that a little bit. And then, I'm not gonna go into detail about that section in the plan that talks about supporting community projects and agency partnerships, but you have there listed all the NRA agency agreements with those tier three facilities that we have in our community. We tried to be very comprehensive, I hope we didn't leave anyone off the list, but that is an amazing amount of support. And then our local foundations are doing a tremendous job with this issue. We have the Charles and Marjorie Bransick Foundation, and likely Gulf Coast is going to support this. They're doing an environmental scan of everything that's available in our community, those tier three resources. And what's the need analysis? Where are the missing gaps? We have teen court and substance abuse counseling that we're looking to expand. We have a fabulous pilot at Sarasota High School, and we're looking to expand that thanks to Community Foundation of Sarasota County and Gulf Coast Foundation looking at that. And then, how can we expand perhaps some mental health therapists in our schools? Our foundations are incredible. The Patterson Foundation supports what we're, we're looking at, you know, wholeheartedly, especially with early learning. And the Ed Foundation, I know, is looking at this also. So again, you know, I'm in awe of what we have in our partnerships. We are extraordinarily lucky in Sarasota, I wouldn't be anywhere else. So with that being said, Deb is our supervisor of student services, and she is gonna go through the center portion of the plan. As you know, if you looked at some of the other literature that we sent to you earlier in the year, we met as a mental health committee in August, and we really got some marching orders from that committee, which was represented by our staff, by foundations, by Carrie Seidman, who I don't, I don't know if any of you were there, but she had her, the Sarasota Film Festival featured her facing mental illness, the art of acceptance that Judge Williams helped produce. I didn't even know he was a documentarian, but that, that initiative made us, from the beginning, know that Carrie was a good person for honor committee. So we will be filling them in. But also, as you know, Sonia Figueroa-Alberts has been leading mental health communication and collaboration with the agencies for several years, and we are very lucky for her expertise. She is gonna share with you the plan on the back page. So Deb, take it away.
Okay, thank you very much. Like Dr. Kingsley said, our department has been working very closely with our school-based teams, can you guys hear me okay? Sorry. For the, for the past couple years since I've been in this position, we're really proud of the work that our team does to support schools and to connect resources for those schools. Particularly, we, we focus on an integrated approach, and what that means basically is we are not working in isolation. If you are out and about in our schools, you will see our psychologists, our social workers, our school counselors, our behavior specialists, working as, as part of a cohesive team to support four main areas. And they're broken down on the insert of your package. You'll see the student support side, you'll see the family support side, and then what we're doing to help our teams better prepare to serve our schools and support our schools, and then how we're supporting our staff that are, that are directly impacting students every day. So I'm gonna kind of take you through what we've been doing over the past couple years. I'm not gonna read you each line, but I want to just hit some of the, the highlights. One of the things that I'm really proud of is that we've been involved in 15 threat assessments this past year. We've had 13 of those conducted since the Parkland, the tragic incident that happened at Parkland High School, the high school in Parkland, and we're, we're very proud that we have a team approach to assess the threats that may be coming forth to our schools, and more importantly, making sure that we are connecting students who are in need to resources that are available in our community.
Quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
You said 15 this year, is in the school year?
Yes, ma'am.
Or calendar year?
This school, this school year, since August.
And so, and you, and tell me the number breakdown after Parkland's...
13.
Oh, my goodness.
And we attribute it to the fact that, number one, we know that when something like that happens, there's often copycat, social media type things, where kids are like, hey, we're gonna jump on board. Sometimes kids are crying for help and they, they, you know, initiate that, or sometimes they're trying to be funny in an inappropriate way. But secondly, we've really been working with our staff to observe, to observe student behavior and to make sure that they're really reporting changes in behavior. We know that's the number one thing that we need to be watching, where if kids are normally talkative and suddenly they're withdrawn, we want, we want to know what's going on with that kid, or if a kid who is withdrawn suddenly starts acting out, what's going on with that student. So we really attribute those increases to those two things.
And I guess the only question I had was on risks, I was talking to Steve Kenny's about this the other day, so risk assessment, can you tell me what triggers...
Threat assessment. So I think that one focus here is that threat assessments are conducted, and we work very close with our director of safety and security and our executive directors at all levels. A threat assessment is conducted when a student is posing a threat to himself or the community, a safety threat, which is totally different than conducting a duty to warn or when a police force gets involved with us in terms of Baker Act. A threat assessment is a security threat posted to that student or to the community within that school.
Got it.
And that's when we review all prior information, and then we make the informed decision, let's do a threat assessment to make sure. And there's different outcomes of that threat assessment, and the key about a threat assessment is that it informs that team at the school on how to then connect resources. And it could be that the student needs that outside removal of that school environment and connected to support documentation for follow-up.
Can I just add one more thing? After Parkland, we did ask principals to get with their staffs and think about children that, you know, may have been someone who they had concerns about but didn't proceed with a threat assessment previously, just knowing the profile of that child.
Eric.
So you do a threat assessment, you identify that they're a danger to the community, have broken any laws, but you can just, from talking to them and the mood swings, or from observation, you believe they're a threat to the community. What happens?
There's a very thorough report based on those two professionals, usually it's the school social worker and the psychologist who conduct that threat assessment. The committee of team meets at the school, and then we look at the levels of the outcome of that threat assessment, if we need to make recommendations for...
Let's say hypothetically, you determine this person's a threat to the community.
Then we look at...
But they haven't broken any rules, they haven't broken any...
Laws, correct.
Laws, they haven't broken any school rules, they haven't done anything wrong, but you feel like this person could be a threat to the community. Does that person stay within the school? That's what I'm trying to understand.
At times, no. We have offered the parents connected resources in terms of behavioral health, and then we make recommendations of choices of where they can access an education. There's many different ways that, right now, we have, and we can make recommendations in terms of providing home instruction, providing visual school, providing a different way of bringing that student to that school. But after hours, it depends on the threat that has posed to that community.
Do we have the authority to reassign that person?
Based on the threat.
You all said recommendations, that was, I was talking about, can we change somebody's school without...
Well, the superintendent has the authority at any time, a security issue is demonstrated by a student, he can make a recommendation to remove that student from any school, traditional school location. But what we have dealt in this past year and since February is outcomes of students that are posing a threat to that school community, so we offer to the parent those resources to help that student access their education, but in a different location.
Thank you.
Did you, you're good?
No, I was gonna say, I have that authority, but she...
Okay. Jean?
Just a quick question. The scholarship of hope, better known as the bullying scholarship, are we going to make some plans to accommodate or to work with those students? Because I know there was some additional language put in the bill that said that we would be doing some mental health counseling, perhaps with the bully and the student who had been bullied before, we would send them off to a voucher program, whatever. Are we putting something in place for next year in regard to that?
Let's go through the plan, and you're going to see how we are integrating what we have been doing and what we need to add or delete or move forward.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get us moving a little more quickly here.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. And just another thing that I'm really proud of in the student support section is, we have the call for help cards that each one of our high school students have access to. So any student who's in crisis of any kind has access to a call for help card, but the really interesting component of this is that we've added a crisis text line. We know that most kids today don't pick up a phone to make a phone call, they prefer to text or Snapchat or do Instagram or Facebook. So there is now a crisis text line on that call for help card where kids can immediately access help as needed. In terms of family support, we've done a really good job of updating our website to provide parents with resources that are necessary, that they can easily and quickly access for all kinds of issues, bullying, mental health, suicide prevention. We also have done a great job of including our parents in our weekly Sins Fins meetings, which are our children in need of services and our families in need of services meetings. We use our social workers and our truancy team to ensure that those parents are participating in those meetings. And as you can see, we have several upcoming events that, the events that are planned will have a mental health focus added into each one of the, the events that are planned. In terms of our student services staff, are all of our student services staff, our social workers, our school psychologists, our counselors, they've been trained in youth mental health first aid. They've been trained in suicide prevention certification, our social workers now hold that certification as well. We all have trauma-informed care practices, not only on the level one, just understanding what those practices are, but understanding the strategies that we can bring to classrooms and make sure that teachers are asking that question that Laura asked at the beginning, not what's wrong with you, but what happened to you and how can we help you be successful in the classroom. We are looking forward to training with Dee Palazzo from Equity Equality Florida for LGBTQIA. We're gonna have all of our pupil support services team trained with that initiative coming up in May, and we are gonna look at the way that we are utilizing our staff to make sure that we are best meeting the needs of every student in every school. Some schools, that data will look very different, they will have less, less services based on the need, and other schools will have more intensive services based on what their students need. Let's see, some of the other things that we've been doing that we're super proud of, I know you guys have heard about restorative strategies. We've trained 471 K through 12 teachers in our district. Right now, we have 121 that are going through the training. We've trained 30 administrators in the use of restorative meetings as an alternative to suspension. We've created a restorative strategies brochure that's available for any visitor in any school. We have a whole page on the Sarasota County Schools website dedicated to restorative practices. We have 13 trainers in our district, and we're looking to increase that number of trainers so we can expand the use of restorative practices and strategies within our district. We have a great partnership with the Gulf Coast Foundation regarding civility squad, and we're gonna be incorporating those 10 principles of civility into our positive behavior intervention plans, which we, you guys know, are posted on the website this year, so we're gonna increase that and expand next year. We have a great conference, I think some of you may have been, it's the Speak Up for Kids Conference coming up in May. It's a whole, totally focused on mental health for students, and then we have our Community Mental Health Agency Fair, which is something brand new that we're working on with our Circuit 12 partners, to plan for our staff to be able to visit with any community mental health provider in Sarasota County. So those are just some of the highlights. I know I went fast...
No, that was good.
If you have questions, let me know.
Caroline.
You talked about social workers.
Yes.
How many social workers do we have?
We have 11 that are district-based social workers, and then we have 10 homeschool liaisons that are in every Title I school, and then Oak Park has a social worker as well, dedicated to their school.
So the social workers themselves, how many schools do they have?
Right now, our social work...
Each one.
Each, each one of our landings-based social workers serves three schools. And then the Title I schools have one that's with them at all times, and Oak Park has one that's with them at all times. The Title I schools also have a landing social worker that provides additional support to those schools as well.
So we're not reducing a social worker?
Yeah.
What you've seen, the pupil support services budget, Shirley, is a social worker requested, voluntary request to reduce her services from a 11 months to a 10 month. So we cost that a cost saving. It is not, it's just one, a voluntary...
She asked.
She asked to reduce her budget.
Okay.
Okay. So our staff, when you look at those reductions, it's ways that we can use federal grants to cover the support and the focus of our administrators who are receiving additional duties to help us guide and implement what we're doing. It's a different way, we are not reducing. So when you look at the back of your brochure here, we looked at things in our district that are working and how we can embrace the possibility of empowering our schools, enhancing their ability to sustain, because we don't know if this money is gonna continue coming. So we look at things that are actually happening, are powerful, are giving us positive outcomes, results in the core. So I'm gonna take you through three levels, and that's why the budget is reduced. We know that restrictive strategies has given you a positive outcomes in the culture of classrooms. So how can we enhance the ability for all teachers at that level to be able to teach and allow opportunities for learning for our students? So we are proposing to train all elementary school teachers in terms of restrictive strategies, the power of embedding and integrating that in the way that they can continue teaching in their classrooms. We're also looking at, some schools right now have been implementing the CHAMPs curriculum with positive outcomes, and you have to look at the framework of positive behavior intervention. We're not going to add to our teachers, our teachers are here to teach and provide that nurturing, loving environment for our students. We're trying to sustain and provide them strategies that they can continue focusing on teaching and that we allow those children to feel accepted within that classroom and allow to, access strategies are going to be powerful for them to use. So we are proposing to use the social-emotional curriculum, CHAMPs is already in our district, some schools have already implemented across K through 5. And then for the middle school and high schools, it's a different way... And then for the middle school and high schools, it's a different way of delivering curriculum training, but we're going to address CHAMPs, but discipline the secondary classroom, because it's a totally different way of delivering social-emotional stability within those classes. The other, we looked very close at not changing the way we're moving in terms of teaching and instruction, but embedding social-emotional, and looking at high-expectation teachings. What are the elements that all classrooms should have by the delivery of that teacher? Because teachers are very embedded in wanting success for all their students. How can we empower them to continue that? So we're not adding additional initiatives. We're trying to integrate what they're already doing, and focusing on skillful teaching, strategies that are going to be powerful for them embedded within their classroom. We want to expand the behavioral and mental health training opportunities to build capacity within our staff. We will continue. One thing that we failed to mention is, our nurses are part of our team, so they also were trained prior to these additional dollars. We have training First Aid USA. We're trying to integrate all our training for all of us to be working as a team, and not segregation. We want to expand youth mental health first aid, because it's a powerful training, it's an awareness training, it's a look force in terms of a student, in terms of a family. There is a no-cost opportunity for teachers to get online and be trained on suicide prevention. We deal with those issues all the time. We need to empower our teachers to access that training. Trauma-informed care training is, like Dr. Kinsley said, it's not about what's wrong with you, but how can I help you based on that background? And then how do I connect the resources? And then we put some dollars in terms of substitute training. We don't wanna take our teachers out of their classroom. They are in such overload to make the power of teaching. We are looking at professional days that we can integrate without removing them from the classroom. But we did put some sub-dollars for elementary and secondary throughout the year. So this is a long-year planning in the beginning. And then the high power of mental health support for that Level III intervention, those students that come to our classrooms without even, without being clinically or educationally identified, but they're showing those descriptors that they need that help and that wraparound care. So we're proposing to contract with some of our community agencies that already are guiding some of this implementation. We have schools in our district that are using mental health therapists from foundation support. They're full-time in the schools, and they provide that wraparound care for those students.
That was my question. Are these on, so the, most of those contract services will be onsite?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, they, we have some existing schools right now that are using this model. It's powerful. We're having positive outcomes. The family's part of that connectivity, because I often say, we offer some high-quality of support systems for our children, but if that family's not involved in that wraparound support, many times, we can only do what we can within that seven and a half hours of the day. So those are how we broke down those dollars. We're hoping that they're reoccurring dollars, but we don't know. So we're going to sustain and maintain what we already are doing with positive outcomes, and then work hard on connecting additional resources.
Well, I think this is great. You know how I feel about social and emotional learning, and I've attended the First Aid Training with you, Sonia, what, summer before last, and I learned so many things about, you know, suicide prevention and so forth. I'd encourage others to do that training. But these are the things I think we need to be doing. I think this will give us power to integrate and to, to make sure that none of our students are marginalized, and that we are not actually suspending or expelling students for most situations in, in the future. And, and I compliment you, because that's not a lot of money to do a great big lift. And thanks also to our community partners, because they are certainly making some, some other things possible that we would not be able to do without their support and help.
We have a great team of, in People Support Services, we service our schools. We have to support our principals, we have to support our teachers, and we have to make those connections. Debbie and I have met, have been meeting these last two weeks with different community programs, people that wanted for us to listen, to learn, and be educated about different programs. And as a matter of fact, yesterday, I met with the state representative for Sandy Hook Program also. And I reviewed all their programs. I mentioned to the superintendent, Dr. Kinsley, there are some portions of, some of their programs that are going to be embedded within our process of providing training and being educated. And I share with them what we already do in our district, because sometimes, a lot of the public doesn't know the intensity and the supports. But I think, you know, to Debbie's and the team of Student Support Services, we're not segregated. We all work together to help that family and help those students. And we have been doing this intensive work for the past three years. So we are, this gives us opportunity to enhance and grasp some mental health providers to come into our school and help us with behavioral health, which is a missing piece, because we're not clinical experts, we're educators. So...
I want to commend you for not running out and saying, "We got some new money, let's go come up with a new program." I can't help but think that you've thought about having a program. Like, it's like going to sleep and thinking someday, you know, if you could wave a magic wand, and I could get a million dollars more, what would I do with it? That you haven't, have been thinking about that for a long time, because, I mean, I know I would think of those things. And, and I think you've really pulled it together here and put it in. I'm so glad that you, you presented this, and not all of that.
Oh, come on. You don't want to say my notes off?
Because, because I know, I, you have a reputation of saying, "No, don't give that, get it down to this." And, and I even added a few notes onto this, but, I mean, I would hope that you printed more of these, because this is such a wonderful-looking program. I mean, it, it takes some of those things that we've wanted to build on, like the restorative strategies, again, that we've all talked about, and, and the civility, and the CHAMPs, and that we're gonna get those contracted services in our schools.
Huge.
I mean, again, it's like if somebody waved a magic wand and gave us a million dollars, what, what would we do with it? Yes, you, you must have been thinking about this for a long time, not just this last month, that you've been told to do it. So it was, it's a well-thought-out plan, and, and I think it really is gonna help our students.
Yeah, Dr. Kinsley, yeah, sorry. Dr. Kinsley has guided us to focus and narrow the plan, but this is the work that our department do. We are here to support our schools. It's about the teachers. They have a lot to do about teaching our children. We are here to go in and problem-solve and connect those resources. And it's hard work. It doesn't stop. It's 24/7. So when they offer this money coming from the state, we said, "We are doing a lot of things. We need to tell our story." And all your schools were trained at the beginning of the school year in terms of trauma-informed care, First Aid USA, so we were already connecting. You know why? Because for the last three years, we have seen our community being impacted by the need of behavioral health for our children. So we're, we have been doing, and it has evolved, and it has not stopped. So how do we connect? And the important about, for example, Goshia right now, not only do they have a power early learning program, they also have a full-time mental health therapist that is part of their school environment, funded by the community foundation. And it's a partnership with the Florida Center for Child Development, which is one of our partners for early childhood. So we're all connecting, and we're seeing what the difference it makes. So we're not reinventing. We're trying to continue to integrate the power of support to our families and children all over.
Sonia, I know they wanna get going on their last item.
I mean, I wanna make sure, this has been a hugely important topic, well, even before Parkland. So thank you for this, and I don't wanna rush it, because if there were any more comments or questions, I certainly won't afford it, because I know it was a high priority on all of our radars.
This is something we've been waiting for, for a long time. Thank you. Well done.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I love, and these, I do love these. I don't know, I mean, I think these are valuable for the community to see.
That's Brian Collins' little...
It's great.
Yeah. And I would encourage you, like, you know, different organizations, I think groups out there that wanna know what we're doing. I mean, we'd be happy to take this show...
We're bringing, we're giving one to our superintendent, so when he goes to his meeting on April 24th and 25th, he can share, because that's gonna be a hot topic in that agenda. We had a conference call with the state, and they're talking about all these different programs, and we're saying, "We have a plan."
Yeah, well, maybe even, you know, bring it to FSBA next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
To reset for three.
Do you want to finish the next item, which, 15 minutes, and then break for lunch? Is that continued as scheduled? All right. Well, I don't think this is gonna take that long. I hope, I don't think it is. I think we already kinda talked about it. I wanted to, the only change, which may be more of a policy, and I know, Dr. Bowden, you and I talked about this before, was, and I don't know if it falls into the procedures, but including, I now, after we did our texting policy, I now have a board district phone. I know Shirley has one. And I wanted to include on here that each board member have a district cellphone. Is that, you don't want one?
I don't want one either.
Okay. Well, let's just keep it, but, but my point is, is that I think it protects the district in a, okay. I think it's in, it doesn't matter who's sitting in the roles, okay, but that it is a, it's a best practice from a compliance standpoint. So I...
I really don't want two phones. I have my phone over the chair.
I'll take one, I'll get one.
I just do think in the long distance, it makes life so much easier and smarter and protects us. And it's, and I know that there was an estimate from a financial side of it, but, and this is board, that would be completely up to you if you wanna expand it on to. I, I believe there's value in, in this practice.
So the cost is, there is no upfront cost. We receive the devices for free under our contract. It's $35 per device, per month.
Okay.
And is it like a year, just so I know, because I'm gonna write my check back. Is it a yearly thing? Is it a two-year contract? Is it a...
Per year, per, per person. So $35 times 12.
It's a monthly, open-ended, I mean, you turn the phone back in, the, the fees stop. You're not making a, it's not a one- or two-year contract. It's just very, how many phones do you have that month? That's what they bill us for.
I just wrote one back, that's what I was asking.
So that would be the only thing that I wanted to propose adding on there, outside of equipment and supplies. I did leave the four drawer file cabinet in case anybody wants that for home, but I didn't think that was the driving force.
I, I wanted to ask about if, if we thought we should put it in here, that there's no texting at the board table.
I'm fine with that.
I have no problem putting that in.
I, I think it's, I think there's nothing wrong with setting our standard of what our students have that standard, and I, so...
I would like that.
I mean, I have to just quiet my phone buzzes, but, so, I can amend. I just wanted to see if there's any, I think the main one was the individual members' budget allocation. We talked about that. So if that language works okay for you, then everything else really stays, it's just updated.
No, no, can I?
Mm-hmm, sure.
Because a membership rotation we're talking about will occur at the beginning of the fiscal year. So that means if we sit on boards like Juvenile Justice or something like that, do we have to rotate off? I'm not gonna rotate off.
No.
It's 20 years.
At least the way we practiced it, yeah.
Stay on that.
I don't really know that, that, it, it really comes down to Value Adjustment Board, because that's, that's required by statute.
Community alliances also approached me, and they're really upset.
But we have a member of, I believe a member of staff is on community alliances.
Community Alliance, do we? Because...
Do we?
I don't know that we do.
No. I don't think so. Sherry Reynolds left.
In lieu of our...
And they're really upset.
Oh.
They're really upset.
Okay, well, that's good, but...
Got that yesterday.
The practice was always at, you know, we'd go around and say, if these are various committees that are, community committees, none of them are required, so we can't require, I mean, outside of Value Adjustment. So it's really incumbent upon the individual board member, so I just left it in there. I don't know that's...
The Professional Association dues, are you including FSBA and...
Everything, yeah. So that's where, each person has a...
It's in the letter.
Yep, it's...
I thought that was a special line.
So it's now, that's those, so everyone equal. Whoa.
So do you, would, would, do you want it that way? Or do you want it, do you want FSBA and Gulf Coast Greater Florida Consortium to be paid out of the same line item as paid out of now? Or do you want it broken down into our individual accounts?
That was the main, I mean...
That's what's happening.
Yeah, I prefer that everybody is equal, and then you, then we're all big adults, and if you want to, I, I don't, I, if you wanna belong to FSBA, once does somebody wants to belong to FSBA and the consortium?
What, I mean, there's a number of them. There could be anything.
And then somebody else wants to travel, and somebody else wants to go to Tallahassee. We're all big adults, and let the, let the school board members decide how they wanna allocate the money.
Yeah, surely.
When you talk about the Florida School Boards Association, or the National School Boards Association... There are reasons that members ought to be members of these associations, because of the learning that can go by. And, and, like, ethics trainings on what is Sunshine Laws, because I know there was been some talk about, well, why pay that money? Because, because that, that money is required by the state. Why pay for those, those when you can get them for free? And I, and I think maybe we saw why you pay for that versus getting it free, because you sit there in the room, and you understand, and there's that, that talk back and forth. And when you go to FSBA meetings, you understand how other districts are doing. I mean, to say that you're gonna be allocated, and this is what you get, because I think we ought to encourage our members, our board, to be members of these associations, because, in, in fact, those people do, I think, extra work by being on those boards. You know, just like the superintendent goes to the Superintendent's Association, and in his contract, we said, "We want you to go to these. We want you to be a part of this." Because I know new members, when they come on, you know, would probably want, we would want them to be certified board members and get that training. And those first years they're on there, it's gonna be more money. I mean, I don't believe that the FSBA meetings, membership should be part of that travel.
For clarification, I think that if you looked at the way the budget outlined now, it probably wouldn't change that much. It really just gives you, or any of the elected official...
Well, if it's not changing that much, why the heck are you changing it?
So it gives it autonomy to the individual person, and actually eliminates these kind of conversations.
Well, I, we've never had these conversations before, so I don't know why we're having the conversation. To say you wanna limit it to say, "This people gets this, these get that."
No, it's all equal.
I think we should be encouraging our board members to attend the FSBA, because it is the association where you learn about, you know, how to be a better board member, how to, how other districts are doing things. You learn about, you know, the legislations that pass, you know, that, that support, you know, public schools across the state. I don't think we need to be making any changes.
I guess I'm confused as to why that...
I guess I'm confused why you're doing this. If, if it's not much of a change, then why are you doing it?
So I think there was a couple different things, that our old procedures didn't really make any sense by way of our reimbursement expense, et cetera. I don't know if you've seen the previous...
Didn't make any sense to you? We've, we've never had problems with this before, so I don't understand why there's a problem, and I, why, why we need to make a change.
Okay, so if I am operating based on anything that was, that was our board procedure, and it said, "A monthly allocation of $250," there was language that contradicted itself. You had preceded the draft before. I think all of us read it, didn't make sense. In the best interest of the operations, to me, it makes sense. I don't want anyone meddling in, nor should you, you're individually elected. You should choose what community events you wanna attend, or associations you wanna be a part of. I mean, that's your absolute right. I think everyone's right. And so that's why I thought in the bigger picture, it makes more sense than having a $250 a month allocation, because what if you wanna go up to, excuse me, what if you wanna go up to Tallahassee during session multiple times, and that's your, that's part of, it made more sense, it gave you more flexibility to do the things that you think of, it made more sense, it gave you more flexibility to do the things that you think are important to do to be the elected official that you were elected to be.
Then change the $250 to $3,000 a year, and that's the only thing you need to change.
You can't, because then the dues for FSBA will come out of that.
I've looked at it from every vantage...
But the $250 was usually considered for local events, the local memberships, or I think Carol Todd was a member of some other things, and I think maybe Kathy Kleinline had other things. But FSBA was never included in that monthly allocation. Never. So I don't know why we're throwing it in there now. Doesn't make any...
So if you look at our cost center, again, this was not intended to be a divisive conversation. Quite frankly, I thought it was going to be the absolute opposite. And I went through financially, the multi-year comparisons. It would have zero impact, for the most part, on anyone. So it doesn't seem, it doesn't seem, I just, I don't get why it needs to be a contentious conversation, really.
I think it might have, if you have new board members that choose to join FSBA and choose to go to the trainings for FSBA to become a certified board member, that's extra. And when they're new, you want them to go to those extra trainings. And so a new board member is going to have additional costs. I, you know, you all didn't take those classes, so you're not aware of that. But we know that when you first join a board and you want to get some learning on how to be a board member, how to do this, and learning about the budgets and all these other things, if you want to go to those kinds of training, and you probably do, and we probably want to encourage board members to do that their first term, it's going to cost more for them those first years. I don't want to put something in there that would hinder new board members from attending those types of things. And I, and I know that you don't see that, but you didn't experience that. We experienced that when we first were elected. We went to FSBA trainings more, and it costs more in the beginning, when you first get on the board.
Regardless of what the item is, I don't want, this shouldn't be a FSBA conversation. It really was a broader picture. However, the, and then in here, if you read it, "Any expense that may cause a board member to exceed their individual budget allocation shall be presented to the board for approval," which was similar to what was in there before on the monthly expense. So it really is a...
I don't have a problem with that, Bridget. I just have a problem with putting FSBA and Gulf Coast Greater Florida School Board Association dues, assigning it to us individually.
And why is that, though? I guess...
Because it was always a separate line item, and it looks like we're spending more money than we are.
Yeah, the professional dues was always a separate line item.
Correct, and it never broke it down. It said, "The professional dues on our budget is..."
Thank you.
"...value adjustment board, I think Greater Consortium is in there." And I don't know, yeah, the value adjustment board's the only main one, which is required by statute. So, again, is, Eric, go ahead.
I just want to make sure. So if we take professional association dues out, that means there'd be no limit to what a professional association I want to join. I could join FSBA. I could join the, I forget what the...
Coalition. There's a bunch of, there's a lot of them.
I could join the national FSBA.
No.
I could join as many professional associations...
There'd be a line item in there with a maximum.
The professional societies, we approve what associate...
I'm just trying to understand. If you, if you don't put it in the budget, if you don't say you get $15,000, you can spend it however you see fit, if you take out the professional association, that means that there's no limit. I can join as many associations as I want? Or I could just join one that costs $10,000? I mean, seems...
There's a line item in the, on our budget. There's a line item.
Unfamiliar.
And I would just like to leave the line item in there. That's all.
Yeah, leave the line item for professional dues. If you want to join more than those that we normally do, or that would take us above that professional dues, that's what comes out of your individual budget. If you say you want to join Tiger Bay, for instance, that would come out of your local budget. If you want to join some, you know, financial...
If I didn't want to join FSBA, if I wanted to join some other professional association that costs the same amount of money, would I be allowed to do that?
Yes.
Yes.
So the, so then you're saying, leave these professional dues in there, and therefore everything else, because everything else was categorized in a way that didn't really give people flexibility and wasn't being followed. So that's, that was, that was the true genesis here, that was...
I believe it.
So if you want to leave professional dues, to me, it just, it's a more transparent function of you choosing what you want, but...
Well, we can, if you would like, what we could do is, is when we look at the budget, we can, we can break out each, each professional dues that, you know, we can, what professional dues are paid, and every year, if you don't want to pay professional dues, you cannot pay professional dues as a board. I mean, you can vote on that and say you want to adjust the budget.
Okay, so for hearing the feedback, would you like to provide some changes?
If I don't use any professional dues, and I pay for it on my pocket, can I use that leftover money, money for community events?
From, out of the professional dues section?
Right, so let's say I don't use any professional dues.
No, not out of the professional dues section, out of your own money.
So you guys would, in essence, get to spend more money than I do.
Well, we all do, because you always give your money away, so it doesn't matter anyway. So why are you talking about it?
I'm sorry, hold on. For procedures, it's not about who is sitting in these seats right now and about what we want. It's a procedure that makes sense and provides cohesiveness and direction for the long-term good of the board. That's, that was, that's what this is about. It's not about what I belong to, what, who you belong to or don't belong to, or anything like that. So what had, what we had before didn't make any sense. It didn't, not just to me, it literally contradicted itself, and the practices weren't being followed. So as chair, I would assume I need to follow what those procedures are, which is the will of the board. So that was what created us drafting this. Well, that's what I say. Here's your draft. If I can bring it forward, this is our opportunity to talk about it, and it be adopted at a board meeting, next, our next board meeting. That was the plan. So if you want to make amendments, we can certainly do that.
Can I ask you another one? On the bottom of the second page, all-in-county mileage forms should be submitted monthly.
That's what was there before.
But I was going to suggest unless circumstances prevent that. I don't know what those circumstances could be. But, you know, it's just like...
Yeah, I have no, I mean...
I guess I'm a little bit more flexible than you are.
Hmm?
I guess I'm a little bit more flexible in my, than you are. You're more, not saying it's wrong, I'm just saying, you're more concrete than I am.
Yeah, and I know to say monthly...
That was there before.
I know.
I didn't edit that one, so...
You know, I, I don't do them on a monthly basis, you know, because I don't have that much that I turn in, that, most of it, I just, I don't even bother.
Well, I would assume that that was probably pulled from our practices in the district at other cost centers where they have to manage their budgets.
Because I could turn mine in quarterly and...
Yes. That, so you want me to, would you, like, all in...
I would like to delete the monthly. I mean, unless there's a requirement, because I wouldn't have enough, I mean, I wouldn't bother with the monthly, because I'm not going to bother making somebody write stuff up to reimburse me for, you know, $7 or $8 worth of travel. I would hold them up and say, "Okay, here, I went down to Northport. Here, I went to there," and, you know...
I know Missy does it with a problem with this.
Here's $50 in travel expenses. I don't want to turn in travel expenses for $8. I just don't do it.
So you eliminate monthly.
I think you guys are reading too, I think you guys are thinking that it means monthly and only for that month. I think it's probably written, so the finance department doesn't get two requests in one month. I think that's what it meant. It doesn't mean you can't do five...
You do it for monthly whenever you do it.
Right, when you do it, just do one a month. Don't bring them up every week. So you can do one for five months and just do it once in a month. I think that's what this means. I understand what you're reading, but the way I read it was, don't be spending one every week. You can do all five months, but do it once a month. Yeah, submit one a month.
Might submit five months.
Five months, but it'll still be one request.
That's what we have to do.
Huh?
That's, that's practice now.
Right.
You don't submit it for five months. You submit Januaries, and then you submit February's, and you submit...
Yeah, because I still got to submit mine.
That's how we do it.
It's all well and good until you get to June, but you can't wait on June.
No, you got to get done by the end of June.
What? I can't submit mine for...
Wait a minute.
Okay. The only other main change, I wanted to make sure everyone, and I apologize, I should have done track changes, would have made this easier, was, where is it? Board office correspondence and email. As of recently, we changed our procedures where the administrative assistant will open it and copy, and then provide us with such, the original, and file that. So I just included that in procedures, and then said, you know, "In the event any individual board member wishes to exempt from this procedure, they shall indicate to the board administrative assisting in writing." That's up to them, and that's put, again, that's just another function to protect the district.
Do you have a thing, Bridget? Okay, we talk about if, if we're, if we are going to be out of town, if we're going on vacation, can we notify Kathy so she knows where we are?
Yeah, I think that's, that was in there previously, and I kept that, vacation.
It's only if for board meetings, though.
As a courtesy, also inform the administrative assistant when you will be out of town, so the superintendent, and it doesn't say "and board," but as superintendent is aware, and to ensure that there will be a quorum.
See, it's more than board, it's more than board meetings, quorums, it's...
Well, there could be an emergency meeting, so it's still fall into it. Yeah.
Everybody should be aware if you're not going to be in town.
Mm-hmm. That's fine, so that still stands, though. I think that's written there.
No.
I'm going Latin competitions with you.
This, this is, again, back to a quorum.
It's in the dead language.
Where is that?
If you take it as a quorum of the last three, three board members, just leave it as a courtesy, also inform the administrative assistant when you will be out of town, so the superintendent is aware, and to assure, so the superintendent is aware.
That's all. Okay.
Okay.
Yep. And, and...
Thank you, bud.
Last item that it's not on there is my handwritten note, was adding in an annual retreat, because we've talked about that for a while. So every December... You're very amenable right now.
Not January through April?
December. We have one meeting...
Well, we have one meeting, and we have FSBA in December also.
Well, okay, I was...
I know you don't go to it, so it's like...
Does it, but, but I know many likely will, so that's fine. I just wanted to add that in. We can indicate what time of year it would be.
I like it, but what, December's a tough month.
Whenever, whatever.
So I'll just add that in there with that.
Yeah, without a month.
Day, night, and why?
Okay.
Without a month.
All right, wow. So we'll have a track changed one for our agenda next meeting, not the following one. So we're adjourned for a 30-minute break?
25, 25.
Do we leave our stuff here? Or you're not going to get a lot?
Wait, timeout.
They're going to move stuff?
What? We're not going to be here...
I'm sorry, we're going to take a, we're going to reconvene in 45 minutes, 45-minute break.
1:30.
1:30.
But you have to be strict about your hour, because we got a break at 2:30 for the 3:00 meeting.
And so we... 45 minutes? Can we, if you need 45?
Yes, staff does.
Staff needs 45.
Can I just do other...
We have Ron LaFace and Vern Pickup Crawford for lobbyist updates. How are you? Welcome. Thank you for your patience today. Take it away.
The floor is yours. Okay. This is on, everybody can hear me?
If there's a red light on, then you are on.
Speak into it, because if you're not right up next to it, they can't pick it up.
Hello? No, there.
The red light.
Yeah, it wasn't lit. It was just a dot. My bad. I'm learning quickly.
No worries.
Well, thank you all for having us here today. Obviously, my name is Ron LaFace with Capital City Consulting, one of your legislative representatives up in Tallahassee. I have in tow with me my sidekick, Vern Pickup Crawford, who assists me up in Tallahassee,